The Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council Meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting in order for May 5th, 2025. Please mark your calendars all present. Can I get a motion in a second to excuse Councilmember Gillis? I got a motion in a second. Go ahead and open the vote. Passes 7-6-0. Thank you. All right, let's see, we have... Let me get this here. Yeah, I got you. Let's go ahead and go ahead and open it up. Where the Vice Mayor is going to do the prayer and actually, what, pledge as well. Go ahead.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father, this past week, we celebrated as a city the National Day of Prayer, where we joined with hands and hearts, giving thanks to you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our city and upon each one of us assembled here tonight. I pray for the agenda before us. I pray for the mayor, for this council, and for all department heads and staff, asking you to give us all wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give us a sense of welfare and true needs of our residents and the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Lastly, Lord, grant us personal peace in each of our lives and joy in our daily tasks. We ask for the protection of our military, for our police, for our firefighters, and for their families wherever they are. We pray for peace, protection, and strength in all of their homes. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have two items on communication tonight. First item up is 2025 Spring Train Recap. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Brown. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Business Development at Goodyear Ballpark, and I'm here this evening to recap our 2025 Spring Training season. We had 152,118 fans pass through the gates at the Goodyear Ballpark this season. That represented a 4% increase over the 2024 season. We had 30 games scheduled in 30 days, and despite weather being in the forecast a lot during our spring training and because of our, really, our best grounds crew in the Cactus League, we only suffered one rain out this season. This season, we increased revenue across our four revenue streams, being ticketing, sponsorships, concessions in our team shop, and right now, we're projected to be in 11% revenue increase amongst those four pillars. This season, we maintained our position across the Cactus League with seeing our Cactus League counterparts on where they stand on attendance with this spring. We had a lot of highlights this spring. We got off to a start on opening day where Councilmember Kano threw a perfect strike down the middle of the plate. We installed this brand-new ABS Strike Zone replay system. We didn't even have to use it for that. It was a strike every way you wanted to look at it. We also premiered our new seating at the ballpark, which was our premium home plate box seating. It speaks for itself. You can see that our fans loved it, the spacious seating, the drink rail, and it really became one of the most talked-about seating sections in all of spring training and at our ballpark, one of our most sought-after seats. Our highlights this spring included big crowds at our stadium, no bigger than our March 8th game as the Reds took on the Diamondbacks and was a complete sellout at the Goodyear Ballpark. And then this year, we returned our City of Hope homerun for life, where a cancer survivor got to round the bases. We stopped the entire game for it. They got to round the bases and take their homerun for life. We returned our popular Kids Run the Bases for four games this season. We had our senior stroll at two of our games this year. And then we also had some celebrities at the ballpark. You're looking on the screen at Austin Dillon, who won the Daytona 500, and he threw out the first pitch before one of the games. It was not as good as yours, Councilmember Kano. And then this spring, we couldn't do it without our game day staff and volunteers. They're an instrumental part on everything we do in spring training, and we continuously ask for feedback amongst our fans, and they always talk about how friendly our staff and volunteers are. And our volunteers give their time to want to give back to the city of Goodyear, and they give everything they have, and we're always getting complimented on how kind and welcoming our staff and volunteers are. And after the spring training season, we did not stop working. We have Goodyear Little League currently going on right now, high school baseball games. We're currently getting ready for Buckeye Union High School District graduations, Perfect Game tournaments this summer, and of course, our two signature events at the ballpark, the Star Spangled Fourth and the Fall Festival. So, Mayor and Council, on behalf of the Goodyear Ballpark, we thank you for all your support. We couldn't do spring training without your support, and we thank each and every one of you for coming out to the ballpark and supporting us this spring.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Does anybody like to make any comments? What do you have? First one up, Councilmember Kano.
Well, I wanted to thank you and Bruce for your technical and moral support for that very incredibly stressful first pitch. And I won't tell you the people who told me I was going to bounce it. So, anyway, very thankful. The new premier seating looked really great. You're right. It looked like people really enjoyed that, and that was a great addition to our team. I have a couple, two friends that came from Ohio, hadn't been here in years, huge Guardian fans. They had the best time. I mean, the park shows really well. The experience, the fan experience is great, and they went back to Ohio telling everybody they need to come out for spring training. Like you said, spring training is over, but the park is still very, very busy. That's the great thing. I don't think everybody appreciates or understands that once spring training is over, it's still a very active venue. And I just want to echo your sentiment about our great volunteer. We just couldn't do it without that entire workforce. So, thank you for a very successful season.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Vice Mayor.
I just want, John, I just want to thank you and all of the staff because it is stressful to put this thing together and then have all of us come, and everything's pretty, and it's all in place, and we have such a good time. And then y'all are there long after the game is over, getting the fields ready for the next day. But I have not heard anything but accolades on this wonderful season we just had. Everyone enjoyed it. It was so much fun. It was wonderful to see police and fire very visible there. People felt very safe, and it was really a fun time, and thank you very much. And yes, I brought my entire family and bought tickets for the Diamondback game because no one wanted to miss that game. It was, it really was a sellout, and it was a wonderful game.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, a great, definitely a great season again. I always enjoy going. Everybody I talk to loves, loves going and enjoys. It really highlights the city. Really showcases all the good things about the city. So, it's a great, great time. So, I think we're still one of the most utilized spring training facilities in, I think, the Spring Training League with all of our events and things going on. So, yeah, definitely a great utilization of it. I'm very grateful for past councils, how they set up the contracts. We can use it year-round. So, looking forward to all the great things for next, next season and for all the things in between. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Bagels?
Yes, I also want to echo what a great season it was. I'm a great, big baseball fan, and so, to be on council this season and to watch everything and to watch the inner workings as well as things we do, walk around and talk to the police officers as they, they monitor the games and, and the staff was, was just delightful. So, thank you for everything, and I look forward to next year.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Nothing major to add, just, you know, good things, great things happening. And, yeah, just thank you. Looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You know, I appreciate the mention of the volunteers because that's what I think makes our community great, is the volunteers and those people taking you to the seats and, and working all of that. They're all volunteers. You know, and I think that's just an awesome part of our, our city. And the other question I had is, as a result of that first pitch, did Councilmember Kano get any recruitments from any of the two teams?
None yet, but I'm happy to represent you if you need.
All right. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next is Water Services High School Internship Pilot Program. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Sabrina Dezzo, Senior HR Business Partner, and I'm excited, thrilled to be here tonight to recognize the outstanding partnership between the city of Goodyear and our local public high schools. First, I want to recognize a few special people in attendance tonight. From the Agua Fria School District, we have in attendance this evening Agua Fria School District Superintendent Mark Eastless. We have Career and Technical Education Director Nate Showman. We have Work-Based Learning Specialist Marcy Baca. And also, a special mention of Melinda Marquise, who was not able to be here because she's at a playoff baseball game for her son. So, with that being said, I'd really like to talk to you today about our, our pilot program of internship with the local high schools. In coordination with the Career and Technical Education programs at each respective high school, we completed a pilot internship program within our Water Services Department. So, in addition to the special guests that I talked about just recently, we also have our successful high school interns in attendance. We have Wesley Campbell, who's joining us, as well as, I want to highlight especially Barb Chappell for believing in the idea and allowing resources to support and, and support that effort, and that resource being Leonard Scheid. Leonard is our Water Superintendent for, and this year, he's supported this year's program at a department level, and he's been involved with everything from interviews to scheduling to the end of the program. The goals of this initiative were to, number one, provide students with career exposure to technical fields that they might not typically encounter, support the development of practical, job-ready skills, and ultimately establish a talent pipeline of skilled candidates entering into the workforce. Our target group for these internship opportunities were high school seniors, providing them with a valuable chance to gain specific job skills before entering the workforce and making decisions about their postgraduate paths. To generate interest, we delivered several small educational presentations outlining the opportunity. Interested students then participated in a guided tour of our water treatment facilities led by Leonard, and those who remain engaged were invited to take part in a competitive interview process from which six interns were ultimately selected. Traditionally, CTE programs follow an early release model where students leave school in the afternoon and then go to work-based learning placements. However, we collaborated specifically with each depart, with each school district to offer morning internship opportunities, and this supported the students in a couple of different ways. It enabled the students to fully engage in daily operations at our facilities while still participating in after-school sports and activities, such as clubs and other commitments. This internship provided students with a hands-on learning experience fully immersed in the water services field. Interns were issued uniforms, as you can see there, attended regular safety meetings, and actively participated in the day-to-day operations alongside our team. This approach ensured that they gained real-world exposure to the expectations, responsibilities, and cultures of a professional work environment. At the close of our high, of our pilot high school internship experience, we believe we have met the mark of what we set out to accomplish. This internship provided meaningful, real-world experience, built both soft skills and technical competencies, with some of this being their first job exposure. This program offered more than just professional guidance. It fostered genuine mentorship. During presentations at the respective schools promoting next year's internship opportunities, two of our current interns shared their experience. What stood out the most to me was their reflection on the sense of belonging and the value of being a part of a team, a key takeaway that extended beyond technical skills into personal growth. And lastly, I saved the best for last. For some, it fostered an interest in career pathways within the water services industry. As of today, because we offered one more, as of today, we have offered full-time positions in water services to four out of our six interns. After they graduate, after they graduate this month, they will begin full-time with us in June orientation, and we are happy to continue our work and partnership at the high school level and look forward to fostering our future.
Thank you. Now, did you want, bring them down?
Did you want to invite them up for a photo?
Yeah. They would like a picture with all of us. Come on down. Yeah. Yeah, you're allowed to go. Now is the time for members of the public who wish to address the City Council on any non-agenda items within the jurisdiction of Goodyear. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Well, thank you. All right, then we'll move on. City Clerk, please read the Consent Agenda Items 3 through 4 by title only.
Item 3, Approval of New Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Sippeth Ranch. Item 4, Approval of New Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Dino's Greek and Italian Grill.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second? I see a motion in a second. Open it up for vote. Passes 6-0. Thank you. We have one business item tonight. Like to remind council, wait for a motion the second before discussion. Consider the 2425 Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Panatescu, Community Partnerships Program Manager for the city of Goodyear. I am back for the last time this year about our Fiscal Year 2526 Community Development Block Grant Annual Plan. We still don't have an allocation from HUD, but because the continuing resolution was passed, we know there's some money coming. We just don't know how much is coming. So, where we are in the process so far is we had the public comment period, which closed at the end of, on April 10th. We had the public hearing. That was the last time I was here. Today, I'm here to get your support via resolution to authorize the submission of a grant application for the projects that we discussed previously. As soon as I'm allowed to, we're quickly approaching our regular deadline. The good news is, we're ready to go so that when we get our entitlement announcement, we can submit the application and not slow down in spending available resources and making an impact in our community. As a reminder, the activities that we use these funds for must benefit low and moderate-income people, areas, or populations that are presumed to be lower moderate income, and they can be things like community facilities and improvements, public services, program administration, attainable and sustainable housing, or economic development. Our recommendation for 2526 is that we retain 20% for the administration of the program, that we allow up to 15% of the total allocation to be available for teacher salaries at the Southwest Valley Y Early Learning Center to support the program expansion. That's the first priority that will be funded, construction and equipment to make age-appropriate classrooms, which will increase their capacity to provide childcare services on-site. The actual dollar amounts will depend on what the entitlement is. During the public comment period, we didn't hear anything negative. We did hear positive comments and had questions regarding future potential activities. So, this evening, I'm here to ask you to approve and adopt the city's FY25 Annual Action Plan and authorize the city manager to transmit these planning documents to HUD and provide any additional information as may be required by resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, with the City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2025-2463 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2025-2463, approving and adopting the city's Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Action Plan planning documents for the city of Goodyear Community Development Block Grant CDBG program, authorizing the city manager to transmit these planning documents to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. and to provide any additional information as may be required by HUD.
Thank you. With the council, please enter a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2025-2463. I see a motion in a second up on the board. Open for discussion. See Councilmember Terry up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And just for the public's sake, just to clarify, make things clear, this is federal grant program money, federal government money to be used for specific purposes. We're not sure on the ward, but we need to have that planned before we ask for that. Just making that quite clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
With that, I see nothing else. Let's open it up for a vote. Motion carries 5-1. All right, with that, does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events or requests for future items? I'll look to my right. Okay, Vice Mayor.
I presented the city resolution for the National Day of Prayer at Desert Springs Community Church on May 1st, and they were very grateful to have it. They thought that it was really a wonderful day. We had a great turnout, and I thank the mayor for doing it for us. And I think, I don't know what else I did during the week, but I was busy.
You got something? Go ahead.
I've been trying to educate people on the charter, the charter changes. So talked to the Public Creek Republican Club, and then, which is good. I think we can do a better job of trying to educate. I've got a lot of questions from residents about what the why, why we are doing charter changes, what that looks like. So just some lessons learned. Hopefully it passes, but we'll see. And I know Vice Mayor is going to be talking to the Public Creek Democrat Club on Wednesday. So trying to get the word out, so we can hopefully edu, at least educate people so they can make a good decision on if they want to vote on it or not. Thank you.
And I appreciate you both doing it. For the city manager, you have anything?
I do not, Mayor.
Huh. Next meeting, May 12th, 2025, in which the Vice Mayor's going to run that because my granddaughter's getting, going graduation. So I will be there. So with that being said, go for their business. This meeting's over.